Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for May 25th, 2003, to order. Trustee Van Gimmert, please take attendance.
All Board members are present.
Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to move on to item number two, Special Recognition. We like to celebrate the success of our Forensics State Champions. If we can bring Danielle Tier. Students being honored for today, thank you.
Hello, I'm honored to stand before you today to celebrate the Bloomfield Hills High School Forensics students that received first and second place awards at the 2023 State Championship. Students that placed first include Justice Southburn, so you guys can come up, 12th grade for poetry interpretation, Paul Abdellnor, also 12th grade, for dramatic interpretation, Sarah Hadad, grade 12, Sales Speaking, and the multiple interpretation group, Next to Normal. And tonight, we have Lauren Capellion and David LeBond here for that group, so come on up. And then additionally, we had the second-place multiple interpretation group as well, and tonight, we have Zoe Dupree here to represent. So, the competition took place on April 28th and 29th at Wayne State University. The Michigan Interscholastic Forensics Association empowers students to become proficient and ethical communicators, critical thinkers, lifelong learners, and leaders in a democratic society through interscholastic speech, theater, and debate activities for middle and secondary school students. Overall, Bloomfield Hills High School placed third in the Class A Tournament. Thank you.
My glasses back on, so I can see. So, continue with our celebration of success. Item 2B, Michigan DECA State Conference. Tina Kavanaugh.
Hello, I am so pleased to be here today to recognize our Bloomfield Hills High School DECA Champions, not only state champions, but international as well. Eight students from our high school team advanced to the International Career Development Conference, which is a huge conference every year, and this year it was Orlando, Florida. We sent a record eight students, and two of which were national champions. It was a four-day event that's the highest level of DECA competition, the best of the best from high schools across Canada, Mexico, Puerto Rico, and a couple countries in Europe. And we finished on top with two finalists in the top 10, one who couldn't be here at the lacrosse game tonight, Nick Getler, who was fourth place overall in hotel and lodging management. He competed against 40 people for that top-four spot and in a 100-question exam in business management, and yeah, fourth place overall, so good job, Nick. We also had our junior Eileen C., who was our mega-champion, brought home the DECA Glass Trophy for a third-place win in a Prepared Event Entrepreneurship Innovation Plan. She was a standout in this field, it's one of the hardest DECA competitions, and she did it all on her own and created an innovation for a real-world problem and built a business plan around it, and put a little personal spin on that. And as a first-year advisor, very proud, very proud of our whole team. And yeah, the whole thing was very award-worthy. Also, we had our integrated marketing campaign team, Forrest, Omer, and Alex, placed 96th overall, 96% top on your presentation. And Evan Friday in accounting applications, Jack Victor in Principles of Business Management, and Ben Getler, who also could not be here, in entrepreneurship, so. Come on up.
Next, we have the Presidential Scholars and Semi-finalists, Lynn Gibson.
Good evening, I'm honored to stand before you today to honor a few International Academy students. Could I please have Adnan Khan, Ching Ching Oh Yang, she couldn't be here tonight, but her mom's here, so Mrs. Oh Yang, if you could come up. And we also have... Am I missing one? Audit, sorry. Audit Jane. So, we're going to start with Adnan. So, Adnan, if you could step forward, okay. Adnan was named a 2023 Presidential Scholar. He is among only 161 high school seniors in the nation named Presidential Scholars for their accomplishments in academics, the arts, and career and technical education fields. He is one of only two students in Michigan to receive this level of distinction. In announcing this 59th class of United States Presidential Scholars, U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel Cardona said, "U.S. Presidential Scholars have always represented the future of our country and the bright promise it holds. I want each of these remarkable students to know: Your passion and intellect, pursuit of excellence, and spirit of service are exactly what our country needs. On behalf of President Biden, I am delighted to join your family, friends, and communities in celebrating your accomplishments. Aim high, share your talents, and continue embracing opportunities to lead as your exciting future unfolds." I certainly echo these sentiments, congratulations. If we could have Audit and Mrs. Oh Yang stand forward. We're also celebrating these IA students who were honored as 2023 Presidential Scholar Semi-finalists. These students were honored for their accomplishments in academics, the arts, and career and technical education fields, and are among only 13 students in Michigan to receive this recognition. The White House Commission of Presidential Scholars selects scholars annually based on their academic success, artistic and technical excellence, essays, school evaluations, and transcripts, as well as a demonstrated commitment to community service and to leadership. The Presidential Scholars Class of 2023 will be recognized for their outstanding achievement this summer. Congratulations to our International Academy students.
Next, we have 2D, BHHS Cyberhawks. We have Bridget Kravchenko. Did I say that correctly? Kravchenko, the V is not silent, Kravchenko. Thank you so much, Bridget.
Okay, if I could call up Alex Hyatt, Eileen Tsai, Jacob Irie, Douglas Kravchenko. And we also had Vijay Deeta and Adnan Rashid, both of them could not be here. We had a team of six, and I'm extremely honored to stand here before the Board of Education and Superintendent Watson, I saw him sitting there.
Behind you.
There you are. Sorry. And honoring this next generation of cyber defenders. They competed in the Cyber Patriot 15th Competition, and they placed second in the state of Michigan. This team also qualified for the Platinum Tier, which this is the highest level and the most difficult tier to compete in. They placed in the top 5% nationally. Here are some of the numbers, 2,000 schools competed overall. In Michigan alone, 95 schools competed, and the Cyberhawks took second place. Only 641 schools qualified for the Platinum Tier of the 2,000. So, during this competition, the Cyberhawks competed as a newly hired IT professional tasked with managing and defending. They had to defend against viruses, attacks on the system, and defending a small network in the company. And they competed on virtual images, Windows 10, Server 2019, Ubuntu, which is a version of Unix or Linux, Cisco Packet Tracer, which is a network simulation tool, and a network quiz. I would like to congratulate them for their accomplishments this year, and thank you.
Next, we have item 2E, Agenda Item Number 2E, Celebrating Success: Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing National Award Winners Storytelling Contest. We have Jason Rubel.
Thank you, Board of Education. I actually have the easy part, so I'm inviting up Diana Campbell, and Jackie Lozano, and Charlotte Jorge, and Drew. If you could come on up to hear a little bit about a competition that they won. But I'd also like to say, I had the good fortune today. At East Hills, we held a DHH Celebration, and I'm just so proud of the community that we have built and the way that Diana, and Jackie, and of course, all of our DHH staff play in creating community, but most importantly, the role that our students have as a K-12 and beyond experience. So, it's pretty special to have that at East Hills and moving into North Hills, of course. So, I'm going to turn it over to the talent, but our staff here, to share a little more about what occurred.
Thank you, Mr. Rubel. So, we're here tonight to honor our students, who, they did an amazing job. First, we have Drew Ginther, who is an eighth grader. We have Jorge Torres Mendoza, who is also an eighth grader. And we have Charlotte Morgan as an eighth grader as well. All of our DHH students had to create a videotape that was made and sent to Boston for a national competition, the Marie Jean Phillips Competition. And they're based in Boston, Massachusetts. This competition is intended for audiences, it's open to students across the country in order to celebrate deaf culture, deaf history, ASL, and advocacy for themselves. I would like to introduce first Drew Ginther, our eighth grader, who won first place in his age group for an ASL poem. His poem was about a personal hero. And his personal hero is an alumnus of our DHH program. His name is Sean Forbes, and he's a famous deaf musician. Thank you. Next, we have Jorge Torres Mendoza. As an eighth grader, he also won first place in his age group for an ASL story. His story focuses on his hero, who is Rolando Seguenza, who is a famous Mexican deaf artist. Next, we have Charlotte Morgan. She is an eighth grader who won second place in her age group, competing for an ASL story focusing on her hero, Helen Keller, who is a famous deaf-blind woman. As a group, our seventh and eighth-grade students worked very hard, researching, creating, writing, acting, and editing their personal pieces, whether they be stories, art, or poems. This competition had to be, for the competition, they had to video record their submissions, and these were sent. And all of their pieces had to adhere to the rules of the competition theme for this year, which was their hero. Thank you.
Continuing our celebrating of success, we have the Girls' Varsity Soccer State Champions, and Ellen Kurzaria.
Thank you, thank you to the Board of Education for honoring our team. I'm going to ask all of our girls to come up, please. Okay, I'm honored to stand before you today to celebrate the 2022 BHHS State Champion Girl Soccer Team. The 2022 Bloomfield Hills High School Women's Soccer Team is the first soccer team ever, since Bloomfield Hills High School was established in 2013, to win a state championship title. It is also the first Bloomfield Hills High School soccer team in over 20 years to earn the title. Going into the playoffs, the team was ranked 12th in their division, but went on to beat multiple higher-ranked teams in the regional and semifinal matches before finally defeating the number-one-ranked team at the state finals in a penalty kick shootout. I can also let you know that throughout the playoffs, the team dealt with having to play a man down in a game, being down a goal, and coming back and showing extreme resilience, mental toughness and fortitude to go back and to win those games and to move on and win the state championship. Furthermore, after the season was completed, the team was ranked number 23 in the country. So, those being honored from the team are Ava Bedayo, Drew Martin, Emma Merchant, Esther Rosette, Alice Spiegel, Charlotte Carlton, Brooke Green, Avery Hall, Lola Halsband, Jenna O'Farah, Jakaya O'Rourke, Ava Duquette, Joelle Lawar, Jenica Optal, Tess Wright, Lauren Cusson, Lily Amon, Emma Henry, Avery Law, Elena Perota, and Sophia Spano. Please give them a round of applause. Thank you very much.
Congratulations again to all of our students and their marvelous successes. We're going to move on to item 3A, Public Comment. Public comment is an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education. It's not a time for dialogue. In the interest of time, the Open Meetings Act provides the Board may place time limits and allotments for an individual comment. In addition to making public comment, you may also email the Board of Education at any time. Any comment that contains profanity, threats, defamatory remarks, or is directed at any person not employed by the district or a member of the Board of Education in their official capacity and related to the role and responsibilities for which they are employed or serve, or is otherwise exempt from the First Amendment protection, will be excluded from the public comment. If you are speaking on behalf of a group or an organization, please identify who you represent. Thank you for your time in addressing the Board of Education. You'll have three minutes to provide public comment. And Trustee Hill, are you taking the time for us?
Yes.
Thank you. Our first public comment is Chris Decker.
Hi there, thanks for listening. I know I'm not going to rehash what happened last week with the baseball fields and the transportation center, but I do want to ask a question. What would have happened if the mom that told us about this hadn't heard about it? It sounded like all systems were go, there was a survey done on the property, we watched meeting minutes where you guys sat and listened to the idea, everyone listened to it, nobody said, "Wait a minute, that's crazy." Actually, I think, Mr. Watson, you did say, "We promised to move the transportation center." Thank you for advocating for us in our East Hills, Eastover community. I'm glad that that crisis is over, but what would have happened if the parents had not gotten wind of it? You weren't very forthright about telling us what was going on. None of us in Eastover and East Hills knew about it. So, I guess my next question is, how are you going forward, going to uphold the promises of the bond? One of the promises was moving the transportation center, and in talking to a few of you this week, it doesn't sound like you're planning on doing that anymore. So, the main thing is, we don't want our East Hills/Eastover school to become the dumping ground for, you know, more buses, physical plant services, their trucks, I don't know what's involved in that, but I've heard different rumors about what's going on with other properties, and it feels like East Hills is just getting kind of lumped in with, "Let's put less desirable stuff over there." We don't want it, we were promised to get rid of it. We want our green space, we want less traffic, not more. So, just please, please, we hear this word, I've been here for 10 years, transparency. I know we all are sick of it, but it's true, it comes up again, board after board. Please be transparent, please let us know what the plans are. Please be honest about what's happening with the property and what your plans are for the transportation center, physical plant services, whatever. We're concerned about the way that that email to us was worded, that it's not going on We're concerned about the way that that email to us was worded, that it's not going on the fields. It doesn't say that it's not going in the parking lot or adding on to the back of the building. So please be honest with what's going on with that situation and all. That's all that we ask, and we can avoid all of that, all of the unpleasantries. So, thank you.
Thank you. Maureen?
Hi, everyone. My name is Maureen Fian-Curth. My daughter Hope is a student at the Wing Lake Developmental Center. And I'm here today to talk about some of the center-based funds that you have left over. We would really like to see some of those funds go to Wing Lake and not be dispersed elsewhere. As you know, these students are the most vulnerable students in Oakland County. They don't get much more vulnerable than our kids. We are in the process of trying to do some renovations to our playground to make it even more adaptable. Ask any Wing Lake parent, there are very few playgrounds that we can take our kids to. And the fact that our playground has been closed for two years, that's a whole nother issue. I did email Mr. Watson about that. It's very upsetting because we would love to be able to use it. We have kids with limited mobility. But anyhow, we're in the process of trying to raise $130,000 to make our playground more inclusive. We're going to all these lengths to raise this money, and I understand you have in excess of $1 million in this center-based fund. Please put it towards where it goes, which is to our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim? Kim Cost?
I will make sure that I send a note to the superintendent's office to be distributed to you. You can jump in at any time and know that the resources that are being made available in this initiative are unparalleled, and they are all free. And if you have noon Friday available, jump into our Community Dialogue Roundtable, and I'm very proud to say I'm the only board member at United Way that also serves as a dialogue facilitator. And who knows, you might end up in my session, which would be really, really fun. We walk the talk at United Way. This is to help us learn, and we are committed to seeing that our communities have access to the same resources we do when it comes to diversity, equity, and inclusion. With that, I do have a concern.
That's three minutes.
You know what? I will leave it at that, and I will make sure I follow up with you because there is something I'd like to follow up with. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Larry Lloyd, and then after Larry is Margie.
Hello. I am Larry Lloyd. I'm a resident of the Bloomfield Crossing neighborhood. I'm also the president of the Bloomfield Crossing Home Motors Association. And I'm here also about the transportation center. Unfortunately, we did not receive the email that's been referenced by a couple speakers, so we're kind of in the dark as to the status of that potential location of East Hills. I will echo the comments of those before me. So we would like to know the status of the proposal because we do have some concerns. One, green is eliminating one, two, or even three baseball fields by paving them over? Is that truly a green behavior? Two, safety for children. If our children in our neighborhood would not have access to cut through the end of the neighborhood to get to those fields, to get to school, then not very safe for them to go on Kensington Road to get to school because there's no sidewalk there. Thirdly, unsightly and unappealing versus having some green space, and that would devalue the homes. So we would really appreciate and request alternative locations or designs are seriously considered, and that we have some access to. What is the status? What's going on? What are the details? What's the design? Is it on the table to locate buses, EV buses, and stations, and equipment, and lights, and security fences, et cetera, right behind our houses or not? And if there is some access, a website or whatever, we sure like to hear it. All right. Well, thank you for everything you do. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Margie Cheroski. After Margie is Begon.
Hi. I'm Margie Cheroski. I have three children attending school in the district. We've loved our experiences at Eastover and East Hills and are so thankful for the amazing teachers and staff and leadership in both of the buildings. I want to thank all of you for the email that was sent yesterday to district families informing us that current East Hills baseball and soccer fields are no longer an option being considered by the district for the Transportation Department's placement. My son's team is playing baseball, a game right now on those fields. At this moment in that green space, those fields are essential in our community. Along with a thank you, I do also want to inquire where the future Plant Services and Transportation Department will be placed. I'm hoping that this will be addressed later on tonight at this meeting. When the bond proposal was presented to families in the community, we were told that there was a need for a new Transportation Department space because the new buses will not fit the current maintenance garage area. So if the current lot is not sustainable as the home for future fleets, it'd be great just to know kind of what our other solutions might be. Will that original $3 million of the $200 million bond that was set aside to purchase land in what was told would be an industrial area, would that still be utilized in that capacity? I'm just hoping for commitment from the board that the East Hill site will not come back on the table as a possible space in the future. And on that note, I do want to emphasize the need to keep our schools green spaces. The fields and baseball diamonds, they're places to run throughout the entire district, you know? We're a community that doesn't really have public parks. There's very few sidewalks. We're still an amazing community, though. The school district's green space is the park area for Bloomfield. We need to ensure that our children, families, and community have places nearby that are safe spaces to gather, play, and run. It's essential to the physical health and well-being of our students, family, and community to have places like this to go. Organized sports teams practice and play games. There's pickup games with friends and families. They happen on all of the fields in our district, across the district throughout the year. Access to these sites spread throughout the district is imperative. So as you plan what Bloomfield School's future footprint will look like, please keep this in mind. I also want to thank you all for everything you do for our schools and families. I know that it is a thankless thing a lot of the time. You give a lot of time and energy to our community by being on the board. And I also do want to thank you for tonight placing the overall well-being of our Eastover and East Hills students and community first by keeping the fields where so many kids run, play, and even walk through to get to school green. Thank you.
Thank you. Begon Preston. Preston. And then Chris Kiesel after Begon.
Good evening. Our community passed a $200 million bond that made promises and earmarked money to be used for very specific purposes. It is not a binding agreement. I understand that. I guess because it passed, you can now rewrite it and do whatever you want. Not surprisingly, there's very little information remaining online that would outline how the money would be spent. I, like Kim, found a single sentence under the community notes after poring through pages and links for hours. But when many of us have the same recollection, when the board deviates from that, it produces a general lack of trust in our community. You may choose to use the money in the way that it was intended and originally communicated or not, but surely you know what you should do, what the right thing to do is. And if you choose to go in a different direction without transparency, the results will be further distrust and strife. And when the need for more money and resources comes up again, which it will, I believe you will come up sorely short on support and needed votes. So to the administration, I ask you to come up with a better plan. We always hear kids first. So put the kids first and get creative and present a better plan to the board, please. And to the school board members, please don't pass plans that are lazy and cheap and lack the intelligence and creativity that our community demands. Please think through implications and consequences. Get community input if needed on the important things, not just what to name the new preschool or what mascots the middle schools should have. Please represent the community that elected you to your position and don't take the easy and cheap way out. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Kiesel, followed by Cynthia Van Owen.
While I'm walking up, I'll apologize for how quickly I have to speak because I know my time is limited. My name is Chris Kessel, and I am here to discuss the central fund money being spent for things that are not special education-related. My son Liam is six years old, and he's a student at Wing Lake, and so obviously this issue is near and dear to my heart and directly impacts my family. And as I understand it, this board is considering taking this action for two reasons. The first is that you guys are under the impression that the kids at Wing Lake and the teachers have everything that they need. And respectfully, I'm here to tell you that is not true. I know this is true, and you know this is true, because in about 10 days, myself, my wife, and friends that I've corralled are attending a fundraiser where we, as parents, have to raise $130,000 for Phase 1 of an upgrade to playground equipment at Wing Lake. What this means is that the special needs parents that are here and at home watching, we have to spend countless hours and dollars in our own home securing, making it safe and accessible for our kids, and then we have to come back and we have to spend more hours and more dollars, sorry, more hours and more dollars, making sure that our kids' playground at school is safe and accessible and educational for them. Now, I know that playground equipment doesn't sound like it's educational per se, but what you have to understand is that this equipment can allow kids to learn gross motor and fine motor skills. It can be used for musical education, which in some cases, like for my son, is much of what they are able to learn. Now, in addition, this money could be used for a number of different things, like increasing wheelchair accessibility at district locations like Bowers Farms, something my son and other kids could also appreciate. Updated activity chairs in schools and upgraded activity boards in classrooms so that kids can participate. My point is that this list is not exhaustive, but the kids and the teachers do not have everything they need. Now, the other reason this appears to be being considered is coupled with, and again respectfully, what I could only call a profound sense of disappointment that I felt when I watched this topic discussed at the most recent meeting. A number of people here said that they would vote for this or they would consider this because this is what's been done or this is how we do things. And respectfully, that is a lazy way of thinking. And I don't believe any of the students who were honored here tonight would use that kind of thinking if they encountered a problem and they didn't know what to do. I'm here to ask you all to do better than what has been done, to be better than what has been done. I know some of you have run recently, and your signs were all over my neighborhood, which is great, but none of you ran on the slogan, "Vote for me. I'm just going to do what's been done." I know at prior meetings, and I've seen you talk about why you ran, and it was to have positive impacts in your community, to help the educational system that your kids are part of. This is your opportunity to do that. Now, the last thing, and I'm sure I'm running out of time, and I made through all my notes, is that I know that nobody here, you know, woke up one morning and decided they were going to stick it to the special needs families and kids in this district. I don't believe that, and I don't think anybody believes that. But you have to understand, what you're talking about doing is such a slap in the face, excuse me, is such a slap in the face to these families and these kids. You have the opportunity to literally be heroes and help a group of kids and a group of parents. We're not looking for handouts. We just need a little bit of help, and you have the opportunity to do that, to be heroes. And I hope that you seize that opportunity. Thank you.
Cynthia Van Owen, followed by Don Greenwell.
Good evening. As the Board of Education, the most important thing you will do is select a new superintendent. I appreciate that you are seeking community input through a survey and meetings with the consultants, but it's extremely important that you recognize that every potential candidate will be watching these board meetings and how you work together as a board and how you treat your administrative team and all of our educators. A change in the superintendent is always unsettling time for the whole organization. And as you move towards a decision, it's important that you know your candidate has proven instructional leadership and organizational skills that you respect and trust. You will attract the best candidates when they see that this board understands the role of a board member, sets goals in collaboration with the superintendent, and lets them execute their responsibilities. A good candidate will look for a district that has a board that sets policy and goals and stays in their lane. Reassuring your whole staff that you will seek a strong, experienced leader is vital during this time of transition. On another note, I will also say I echo a lot of the concerns about the transportation center. As a board member, I went out to my community and asked them to vote on the board, on the bond, with the move of the transportation center as part of the bond. And I've been downhill of the gas fumes of the bus center for the last 35 years, and I really had hoped that this was going to happen.
Thank you, Cynthia. Don Greenwell, followed by Kimberly Cromer.
Good evening. Don Greenwell, 36-year resident of the school district. I'm totally confused on the transportation center. So my points might be a little off, but I think they're still valid. In the name of going green, the district apparently needs to expand the transportation center. One of the ideas I've been told was to pave the ballfields immediately adjacent to residential neighborhoods, both in the township and in the city. Jenny, my wife, and I stood down on the 2,000-bond campaign for a variety of reasons, but heard loud and clear the promises of addressing the lack of community green spaces. The plan, this plan would break that promise to the taxpayers. Picture this for a moment. My neighbor, Dr. Shenden, ourselves have developed on our property a pathway to allow our children and our community to access those fields in East Hills. Picture this. It's cut off. Barbed-wire fences, 20-foot-high overhead parking lot lights. And of course, a major unknown, still out there, but whisper, is a major collection of industrial-type batteries. Functionally, I never understood why we're in the busing business. Nonetheless, the bus and repair equipment that has been traveling right through the middle school with all those inherent dangers, but now it's an elementary school. It really needs a better place. I'm sure the board can appreciate today's agenda, too. The irony, Pine Lake, brand-new community park, buying more property for the nature center, paving the ballfields, expanding the transportation center. And instead of a bus garage with residential frontage, how about the 3,000-feet of expressway frontage we own? We ask the school district, please preserve the aesthetics, the nature, and the brand of our residential areas, provide a safe operation for our elementary schools, and keep the ballfields and green space for our students and the community. Because once it's gone, it's gone. Thank you.
Thank you. Kimberly, followed by Maria Yar.
Hi. My name is Kimberly Cromer, and I'm going to read from this. "We moved to Bloomfield Hills from Rochester just so our son Elliot could go to Wing Lake Center. I am here today to ask the board, please grant Wing Lake Center funds for adaptive equipment and playground needs of $200,000 because, plus. At Wing Lake, we have the smallest population of 80 students from 24 cities in Oakland County. We have 32 buses that come every single day to bring our children. We have the most medically fragile and cognitively impaired children in Oakland County. My son wakes up every day at 3:30. Our children have seizures. They have feeding tubes. They have oxygen. They are fragile, fragile children and still deserve as much education as we can give to them. It's impossible for our 80 families in 24 districts to fundraise while caring for their medically fragile children. Our families have constant medical expenses. We are exhausted parents. We do not have time to raise extraordinary funds of $200,000. Our playground is a space, it's an extension of our classroom, a tool for our children's therapies, sensory needs, and foster socialization, a tool that supports our staff and therapists hourly. I volunteer twice a week. I paint at the school. I am on the PTO for fundraising. I am on PAC. Jen Perone has asked me to be the president of PAC. I don't want to be the president of the Jened PAC. I want to take care of our school, our children." I want to take care of our school, our children, and that is why I'm here today. I paint twice a week with the children. We sell T-shirts that we paint. We auction children's artwork. We have family donations and we have events organized by the teachers. Mr. Kessler, the event he was talking about has been coordinated by our staff, our teachers, because they know we are tired and we are giving 500%, even when we're sleeping, 500. I wake up when my son moves because I think he's having a seizure. This is not acceptable when there is a center fund for these extraordinary circumstances of special needs. We need adaptive equipment and updates for both wheelchairs and mobile children so they can be together. So my son's wheelchair friends can be on the same piece of equipment with him so they are not isolated. They're already isolated from the world. We need permanent shade for swings, adaptive equipment, and functional tables, picnic tables, to protect our baby's skin from the sun and the heat. Our children do not tolerate sunscreen. They don't wear sunglasses. They will not wear a hat. They will bicker about it. My son already has a tan and he fights me. So we have to pick our battles and that is a battle there on the playground and we want them there. Also, we need secured access to our playground seven days a week for specifically Wing Lake families only. We want a key, a keypad, or a key fob for Wing Lake families during non-school hours. The public abused Wing Lake Playground and used it as a dog park two years ago. Bloomfield Hills building crew cleaned up 27 bags of dog waste, cigarettes, and broken bottles on the playground. Our children deserve a space to gather that is safe and familiar to them. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Maria Yar Wolosso, Woloson. Are there any other public comments after Maria? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Everybody hear me? Okay. I'm Maria Yar Woloson. I live at 572 Tally Hole Court, Bloomfield, 48304. I am a resident there for over 30 years and I live on the cul-de-sac that backs up to East Hills Middle School parks. The reason I'm here is because we strongly oppose any suggested removal of those ball diamonds and park. And I understand that, I guess there has been some update as to whether or not it's going to happen, so excuse me if I'm being, if my comments are not appropriate, but I just want to make sure that you are very, very well aware of why we oppose the demolition of the playing fields in East Hills. First of all, I'd like to suggest that my understanding is the present bus lot has existed there since about the 1970s when it serviced more than 10,000 students and our schools operated about 11 institute, 11 K through 12 buildings. Again, my understanding now is that the enrollment is about half, 5,000 students in only eight buildings. And what I'd also like to make sure everybody knows about, and I'm sure you're aware of this, if you are ever at the schools in the morning or in the afternoons, you are literally, practically run over because there's so many cars and parents dropping their kids off or picking them up. And in other words, I don't know exactly how few kids are actually using these buses to begin with. That's just kind of what I want to say about that. Another big thing is the property values. Being next to a parking structure obviously would have a negative impact on that. And if I can just say one other thing about, there's a lot of talk about getting EV buses and things like that, which I'm assuming would be running on lithium batteries. I know an individual who is actually involved very much with a international corporation that is involved in the production of EV batteries that requires a lot of lithium that has to be mined and things like that, and it is a nasty chemical. And so I'm actually very, very concerned about any conversion to EV buses as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Seeing no additional public comments, we're going to move on to superintendent update report, item number four.
Thank you, Dr. Southward. Just a couple brief updates. One, our amazing students this evening. You would think after being in education for so long, it wouldn't be surprising, but every time, I'm just amazed what our students were able to do. And to see the students we had this evening and the words and the achievements, just amazing. Today, our prep students held their end-of-the-year celebration and three of our amazing students will be graduating this year. So excited to see them off at a graduation. Excited to see all of our current eighth graders participating in Move Up Day tomorrow. Next week, we'll be sharing an update with high school students, staff, and families regarding next steps in the hiring of the next Bloomfield Hills High School principal. Also, over the past few weeks, we held transition events for community members in all four of our elementary schools. We've welcomed hundreds of families to tour elementary schools, learn about the exciting happenings that are going on as part of the transition, and hoping everyone in the community has a safe and relaxing long weekend. Thank you, Dr. Southward.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five for president report. I'm going to combine my report with the superintendent search. So the Board of Education met last week and we met with our search firm. And this week, our update is we were able to send our survey out to our families. The search firm also was able to meet with our students this past week, which is amazing. Our student interns, there were six students that actually showed up to meet and discuss how we would actually get our students in the high school and middle school to participate. From there, they determined that they would use a few of the student leadership groups to converse and participate as like, in similar format as our community, to participate in the same three questions that were in the survey that our families have access to on our website. From there, our high school students met yesterday, as well as our administrators at the high school. Our IA students also spoke with the search firm, which is amazing, and as well as some of our staff members that were invited to participate. We did have some low attendance at some of these events and we'll talk about that a little bit later on. And then there was also a 6:00 PM community member session as well. From there, our search firm has also updated our, worked with our community communications group and with our communications team. Our website has been updated to provide you with up-to-date information on our superintendent search. We are looking to, from the information gathered from our survey, we're going to be putting together our candidate profile and as well as a position announcement. Our search firm will be sending us documentation after the conclusion of our final community meeting on Wednesday. From there, we'll be looking for feedback from our Board of Education immediately. So it'll be like a fast turnaround team that Thursday. Our goal is to try to stay on our timeline and having the position posted by June 1st. At the same time, we are also working with our search firm in parallel in looking at our possible interim. And so what he is doing is having some initial talks with a few folks regarding some possible candidates for that particular position as well. Any questions?
In the audience, maybe be a little quieter when you're whispering. Thanks. No questions.
Thank you. Oh, that was kind of, that was kind of hard talk over. All right, so anything else regarding superintendent search now? So we'll move on to item number seven, which is our healing response plan from our superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Southward. There's been no additional incidents of hate that have been reported. Communication camp update. We've secured the dates for staff training in September and the camp dates in November. During the summer, there'll be planning meetings that take place to discuss the timeline and process for notifying the students that'll be going to communication camp. Part of communication camp will be a comprehensive program focused on civil discourse and critical dialogue facilitated by trained BHHS faculty. Also going along with the action items, identifying, review, research-based approaches to further develop a positive school culture and climate. The government teachers are planning a Washington DC trip for the spring of 2024 for junior students. This is to make up for the fact that they missed their eighth-grade DC trip due to COVID. Turn it back over to you, Dr. Southward.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number eight, Diversity Assembly Investigation Committee update. Trustee Van Gamarit?
Sure. We met with the attorney last week, was it, Megan?
Yes.
Yeah. They advised us that a report will be ready on June 2 for the committee to review and the following week for the board to review. And then I believe we're going to try to get it on the June 8th agenda. That would likely be closed because there may be employee names or things that, you know, maybe shouldn't be disclosed, but I don't know for sure. Rebecca's not here and she indicated that the June 8th meeting was pretty packed, so... But it's my suggestion, I think the committee's suggestion to just squeeze it in because we, you know, it's something we need to do as urgently as possible. So that's what we got so far.
And the goal will be to share as much of the report as possible without compromising personnel issues.
Okay, so we'll try to figure out that's going to be at the beginning or the end of the meeting. Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you. We went on to item number nine, which is the consent agenda. Trustee Van Gamarit?
Man, I need to get some readers. I move, I move that the Board of Education approved the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Request to approve the minutes from the study session of April 13, 2023. Request to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of April 27, 2023. Request to approve the minutes from the special meeting of May 2nd, 2023. Request to approve the minutes from the study session of May 11th, 2023. Request to approve the minutes from the special meeting of May 17, 2023. I move that the Board of Education approve the financial reports as presented by Karen Hildebrandt, or I move that the Board of Education approve the dispersment, the dispersment reports as presented by Karen Hildebrandt, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations. I move that the Board of Education approve the food service management contract renewal with Aramark Education Services LLC to provide food services management for the 2023-24 fiscal year as presented by Karen Hildebrandt. And I move that the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented by Keith McDonald, Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Consent agenda has been properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Here in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Whoa, wait. Sorry, any discussion? All those in favor? Any oppose? Seven, zero. Moving on to item number 10, general discussion, 10A, Transportation Center location.
Thank you, Dr. Southward. So we did send an email out to the East Hills and Eastover community yesterday letting them know that where the ball fields are located in baseball and soccer, that that area is no longer an area for consideration. As far as where we can actually put the Transportation Center and what options exist, we'll be working with the small group that's part of the bond committee that includes three board members, looking at what options are available and what might meet the needs of the community. And once we have some additional thoughts and vetted some additional ideas, we'll bring that back to the whole group. But we'll work with that small group on that and of course, with Barton Mallow, Plant Moran, and Cressa, and then internal administrators as well.
For those of you who don't know, our board bond committee consists of trustee Van Gamarit, trustee Kumar, and trustee Colan.
Correct. So that's the only update as of now.
Any other comment?
I do want to clarify, the email that went out, I think it was yesterday, we got, we received that email 30 minutes beforehand. I worked up and edit to that email. I didn't realize when the email was going to be sent. And this is what I would have had the email say. The administration presented a number of options for the location of the Transportation Center to the Board of Education at the June 9, 2022, and July 21, 22 study sessions, including the administration's recommendations. As part of that discussion, administration outlined next steps, which included establishing user group meetings, completing surveys, geotechnical services, et cetera, conducting noise and traffic studies, generating a budget, and conducting information meetings with surrounding neighborhoods and communities. Following that process, the administration was to seek BOE approval. So prior, there's been no approval for a Transportation Center before, and there hasn't been one now. We don't know where we're going to put it. While the process of inquiry is just beginning, we have heard your, and then it goes on to say, "We've heard your feedback and the fields are off the table." So I guess I just want to clarify that while we were presented with that option, there were a number of other things that were to take place to determine whether or not that was a viable option. And since that time, nothing has happened. And finding out that a survey happened was something that we found out at the same time as you found out, or shortly thereafter, I guess.
Did you want to say something?
No, I mean, I echo, yeah, no, I echo that. I mean, when I read what you wrote, I agree with that. You know, we talked, other people said the same thing. When we got elected, we made promises. We made a lot of promises and key to that is transparency. So to be transparent and clear, you know, I certainly wasn't baking anything in the background. I don't think anybody was trying to do that. I think as I found out, you know, I'm sure I had the same reaction other people had about what might have been, you know, thought about, about transportation, what's happening. And to be clear, you know, we have the same concern. I'll just say, speak for myself, I have the same concerns. I want to make sure that when we promise something, we deliver on a promise. You know, we advocated and worked with the community members who supported that bond. And I think that's always the goal, at least I have in my mind, is whatever we promised, we should try to strive for that. You know, that's our best effort. Things can change and things have changed. I mean, that's why we have change orders with all these bond projects. But we need to be transparent, we need to communicate. I think now is the time, this is a great opportunity to pick that back up, no matter how this ends up. But we communicate with the community frequently, as much as possible, surveys. So I'm not in the, in the committee necessarily, but very eager to stay in tune with that. If we need to go out and visit with people at sites, if we need to talk, I will always be ready for that because I think this is something, obviously, we've heard loud and clear, that we need to work very closely with them and I will be happy to do that. But to the rest of the community that's here, that's listening, we hear you. You know, I just want to be clear that, as John said, you know, there wasn't something, there wasn't a plan certainly that we were working on and doing anything. So we hear you and we want to work with you. This is not something that we're trying to do unilaterally. So we support you in that regard and at least from my perspective, our goal is always to deliver on whatever our promise was originally and strive for that. And when changes happen, we communicate with you and make sure that you're a part of that process.
So we will, we look forward to our committee reporting back on those discussions at each meeting. Is that okay?
Our first report.
Our first report will be probably in June?
Yeah, at the June committee, the whole, not so much on the Transportation Center, but an update on the bond in general will be reviewing.
Okay.
I think from a committee perspective, we are working closely with administration, Plant Moran, and Barton Mallow to make sure that everything that we promised in the bond is delivered on time and as much as we can at this point on budget. is delivered on time, and as much as we can at this point, on budget.
Thank you for that. Look forward to your committee report and keeping us in the loop as to how these discussions pan out, so we can have this larger talk at the board table. Thank you so much. Item 10B, Wing Lake Playground Equipment Discussion.
So, on the morning of April 19th of this year, we received an email with an invite to a fundraiser. I was writing an email about something else, and I asked the question, "Why does Wing Lake have to fundraise for a playground?" Trustee Cullen responded, "My suggestion to pay for the playground was the $400,000." And that's how this agenda item got here today, because we're not sure exactly what is going on, and why we might, like, if we can't do that, you know?
I think we had a discussion at our last study session about $400,000 being transferred from the center fund to the general fund to pay for seven-year-old legal fees from our special education department, which I adamantly opposed to doing. Then, to John's point, you know, one of the questions that came up in the study session is, "Why aren't we using it for Wing Lake?" And apparently, I guess we were under the impression that they didn't need anything, and then we resurfaced this playground equipment. So my question is, why can't we use this money, which is $400,000, to pay for the playground equipment? And that's why it's on the agenda. And I guess, well, I guess I'll follow up, and I'll ask a question for Karen. Can we legally pay for this playground equipment from the center funds?
Center program fund melts is unrestricted. It can be used for whatever is the pleasure of the board.
Okay, so I would make a recommendation that we use this money to pay for this playground equipment, so they do not have to fundraise for it.
I think we just need to take a five-minute recess.
Yes.
Can we take a, we're going to take a five-minute?
Take a five-minute adjournment.
Can somebody make, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and we'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you.
... unwell and had to head home. So I'll be continuing for the, and sharing the rest of the meeting. So we left off on item 10A, 10B, Wing Lake Playground Equipment Discussion.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, we have this, we have access funds, there's a need, there's the playground need, that's the immediate need, and there may be other needs that we can go through. And apparently, legally, we can use it, it's unrestricted. So can we, as a board, instruct administration to, that we agree, and it should be paid for?
Do we want to go around the room?
I have a couple of quick things to add. So I know last study session, we talked about PTO fundraising, because we got, John mentioned, we got that email, and it was like, why are, you know, why are they doing that? And there was discussion about, well, typically, a lot of times, the PTOs do raise money for playground equipment, but this is a very different situation in my mind. You know, you have, as the community talked about, you have students from all over the place, it's not just Bloomfield Hills. You have students that have very, very unique, special, customized needs that, you know, the costs are huge. We're not talking about a Conant raising money for a playground, it's apples to oranges. So, you know, and we're talking about students that may exist in group homes and things like that. So talking about fundraising is just such a different, a different notion than when we talk about at our, you know, elementary schools or anything like that. So, you know, I looked into it, I know we had a discussion, or we had a question about how it was funded in the past, and I know that there was, you know, Kellogg Foundation, I think, was one of the ways that it had been funded. We were unable to use that once it flipped to going from public use to not public use. I happened to reach out to Kellogg just to ask, it's not, they typically, say now, they typically don't support that, but I think we have to find a way, whether it's, obviously, I would support transferring that, but I think there's a number of other things we couldn't let that too. I would add that special education on the state's budget, which we should know very soon, has a large increase in special education funding, as well as going up to 100% of the dollars, rather than the lower percentages it was in the past. So I think, I agree with Paul, we can do it, we should stop transfers, and we should reverse and put that money back to where we can have a larger impact with it.
Thank you, trustee Cullen. Trustee Hill?
I echo what he says, and I, and I want to make a comment about the last meeting, and some comments that I know that I probably made during the meeting. I know that as a board member, I'm not going to get all this perfect, I'm going to say things I regret. And I know that one of the comments that I made, not even flippantly, but without being more measured and informed, was something to the effect of, "I was there at Wing Lake, and I had a conversation, and it sounds like they have what they need," and that was probably one of the worst things I've said out loud publicly at a board meeting, is making that comment. So I apologize for that. This is clearly very layered and very complex, and there's a lot for us to understand. And so I'm in, I'm in support of advocating, or funneling those dollars for that purpose as much as we can. It sounds like there's even broader range of issues and needs that are there. I am the Wing Lake liaison, and I would like to commit more time to being there and understanding all the needs in and out, so that when I am here at the board table, I'm making representations that are accurate.
Thank you, trustee Hill. Trustee Van Gamarit?
I asked the question only because I'd been a part of an Eastover fundraising for playground equipment, and then when the bond came around, all of a sudden, every elementary school is getting playground equipment, and I thought, "Why are we still fundraising for playground equipment?" And I had just got a flyer, you know, an email from, from saying, "Hey, can you come out to this event?" And I thought it was odd, you know, that one school is not getting a playground, but all the other schools are. So... That's all, I mean, I, I'm for using the funds. I don't know, accounting-wise, how it would work, and I don't know that, I don't know what this motion is saying exactly accounting-wise, but I support the notion.
Yeah, I think with this, we just need to see a summary of scope of work. I don't think that we're signing off on it at this moment, but we're expressing, excuse me, expressing support for it. We'd like to see the details, and the projected costs, and the breakdown and all that, but I think we are in.
So there's two elements to this, right? One is the transfer of funds. I think I'm hearing everybody say we're in support of not transferring those, so we're pulling that back, right? Or that action. So let's go around the table, but I heard, at least from three of you, right? And I'm in favor of that as well. I think I'm better educated now than I was the last session. So let's get that piece out, and then we'll come back to the funding for the playground itself.
Yeah, with regard to that, I don't know what I said at the study session necessarily. To me, the study session is a time for learning and figuring things out and discussion, so I, trustee Hill, I don't fault you for saying things, so, you know.
It's not going to be the last.
It's a discussion, more of a time for discussion, and learning, and figuring things out. And so I don't remember what I said, but I think I kind of wavered back and forth. I said, "Paul's right, but, you know, blah, 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 you know, but this is how we did it," and, you know, and I was kind of on the fence, but I agree. There's.
So specifically, the general transfer, I mean, transfer to.
But like I said, I also don't really know exactly how that works on an accounting level. I don't know that we've actually transferred the funds yet.
No, I don't.
I think that's what was said last time, so.
Well, I think we're voting on the budget tonight.
Yeah.
And so we would have to stipulate in the budget, if we are voting, that that money would say not be transferred, right? So to Sivis' point, two things, right? Stipulating that money not be transferred, and then obviously, working with Rebecca from that building, and the PTO over that building, to see, you know, right, step two is, what is the cost that is needed to fund this? And then maybe there are other things that we've heard to fund, and we could use that money, earmark that money toward that.
My understanding of this whole situation is that we are underfunded in special education, and that's why they needed to use this accounting practice, and it doesn't look good to so many people, and I'm trying to understand it more right now.
I didn't, I didn't understand it last time. It's seven years of legal fees, that's already been paid, and now we're transferring $400,000 to cover it, because we were in a budget deficit. So as I said at the last meeting, it's, you know, it's whatever, some accounting, creative accounting, which I was not comfortable with, and I was not going to vote on the budget tonight because of that. And then obviously, when we found out that there's money to be needed, so even more so that that money should be used for the people of Wing Lake.
Superintendent Watson?
Just a point of clarification, the only vote on the budget tonight is on Oakland Schools' budget, not Bloomfield Hills Schools.
Thank you.
So, do we need to prepare a motion to say, "Hey, at least at this point, we're committed to not finishing the transfer from center out," or however that's set up, but going reverse?
You don't need a motion.
I don't know.
I think we're in general agreement that the funds are not going to be used from the special education front, to the general.
Yeah, and to John's point, the purpose of the study sessions is to be able to have open dialogue. We can't, as a board, sit and have these discussions, which take a large amount of time to understand these issues in and out. So we're sometimes learning about things, that in a perfect world, we'd know everything, but sometimes from a practical standpoint, we can't. And we want to support our community and what their needs are, but I also want to show a lot of support for our staff and the hard job that they do, and that they're accustomed to things, that then it comes out, and it might seem, it might appear a way that wasn't intended, and I want to have their back as well, and make sure that we're hearing their side of why they're doing things the way they do, and give them a chance, a fair chance, and not assume ill intent, but hear them out, learn the process, make sure I have a fully informed decision before I take a strong stance on it. So it's a balance of representing both the community, but also making sure that we have staff that enjoys working with us, knows that we want to understand their roles inside and out, and that we want to work with them.
My question is, how are the, is the $400 paid for then, or 400, $400,000? Because it's all one district, right? And, you know, you rob Peter to pay for Paul, or Paul.
I don't, I don't look at it that.
So my question is just, where do we go from here with that?
My, my suggestion is, we clearly hear the Wing Lake community voice that they'd like us to fund the playground. How about we take some time to study the needs at Wing Lake, and also look at it from a perspective of other playgrounds, what's been committed so far, what's left to be spent, what more is there at other playgrounds to be spent? Get a better assessment of everybody's need. I'm not sure I know it all.
Superintendent Watson, is it possible to, we did get an email with kind of some detail about what they thought it was going to cost. Is it possible by a meeting or two down the road, that we have a motion put on that says we're going to fund X amount of dollars, or up to X amount of dollars, and that the district helps Wing Lake figure out how to get this playground? Is that something that we could, like?
Not sure I understand the complete request, sorry.
So, we got an email saying that it's a two-phase project, I think 150 grand out of the gate, and then some additional sunshades that were another 50 grand, I don't know, it seemed like it was about $200,000 project. Can that be paid for just directly out of the center fund? So with, disregarding the $400,000 transfer from the center fund to the general fund, can we just pay for the playground out of the center fund and not have to do any accounting?
I believe so. Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe so.
Can you?
So there, there's two options that are available that we can do. Number one, we can have playground equipment, charge his capital equipment directly to the center program fund, as we incur the expenses, or the board could authorize the transfer out of the center program fund into the capital equipment fund, have the capital equipment fund pay for that, so it's capitalized with the rest of our fixed assets. That would really be the cleanest way to do that, and I think the PowerPoint, John, that you're referencing, had phase one at like 155,000, and phase two was 70,000. So what I might recommend is that the next, on the next board agenda, perhaps consider funding up to $250,000 transfer, based on the scope of work for the Wing Lake playground, and to transfer it into the capital equipment fund. And obviously, this would not happen by June 30, so it'd be fiscal year 24 budget, and then to remove the legal fee transfer that had been originally approved and budgeted, to keep that within the center program reserves. I think that's the two-step process.
I think that makes.
That sounds reasonable.
That makes a lot of sense.
Any other comment?
No.
Item discussion?
Seems equitable to me to have their equipment covered, like you were saying.
Superintendent Watson, any comments or questions? All right, we'll continue making progress on that. Thank you. All right, general discussion complete on item 10B. We will move on to 10C, catchment areas discussion. Now, this is something I've been on the fringe of, so I can't. Something you what? I've been on the fringe of this discussion, and I know this handout just came out, but... I know Michelle was more involved in that.
Michelle was a little bit more involved. Essentially, you want to go?
I can give a high level. So, this goes back to, you know, obviously, the whole realigning areas, right, to balance the four elementary schools. And the school that ultimately, because of factors that it impacted, was, was Way, Way Elementary, where they realigned. So step one is they realigned, and then, my understanding, and anyone could, you know, Superintendent Watson, correct me, is there were X amount of families that were designated to eventually go to Conant because of the realignment. So, so I guess a communication happened, and then X, and then what it was is, so they said that you could either stay away without busing, or go to Conant, but you're going to have to go to South. And so a lot of families left, and some families decided to stay away. Then after, I think seeing how the numbers are shaking out, and I think at the time, you know, originally, it was thought that North was going to have higher numbers than South. It started to shake out that South was having, was more populated than North. A decision was made that, since the people are away, with, still without busing, who were scheduled to go to Cal, you could go to middle school North. So that was like, you know, like, I guess, whatever it was, let's just say, eight months later, an exception was made for that, to go to middle school North. And so that's kind of where we are. And then, so there's a segment of the population, like the people who went to Conant, had never had that option, because they're now scheduled to go to South or go to North. And then there's a segment that has always been zoned for Way to go to North, because a lot of their cohorts are in South, are at Conant going to South, would now like, potentially, I'm not saying it's a lot, there's some families that would like to go to South. That's kind of where we are.
So, we started by passing the bond in August of 2020, and regardless of the bond it passed or not, we committed to redoing the catchment areas, so we could better balance and right-size the school districts. So we are closing three middle schools, and we are opening two brand-new middle schools. When the decision was made to go with two middle schools instead of one, then we needed to establish feeder patterns. So the next two feeder pattern, or the feeder patterns to establish, were Conant and Lone Pine would go to South Hills Middle School, and then you would have Way in Eastover that would go to North Hills Middle School. And then we looked to see what those numbers might look like. After that, the next step was looking at whether or not we could have a legacy option for our elementary students, because we know some were moved Conant to Lone Pine, Way to Lone Pine, Eastover to Way. Way to Lone Pine, Eastover to Way, Way to Conant, and then East Hills back to Way. And so we were able, based on the numbers, to offer an elementary legacy. Within that, we looked at each elementary building within their cohorts, trying to keep them together. By moving students from Way to Conant and moving students from Way to Lone Pine, if they were to accept or use the legacy option to stay at Way, yes, they would have to provide their own transportation. But because they were going Way to Conant and Way to Lone Pine, they then were supposed to go to South Hills Middle School. So for those two groups, and it equates to three subdivisions, we extended the elementary legacy so that they had the option to go to North with the other students that are at Way. For example, if you, this year, had a first grader at Way Elementary School and you were reassigned to Conant, but you decided you wanted to stay at Way, he'd be there for second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. Had we not extended that elementary legacy for middle school, that fifth grader then would go to South Hills Middle School instead of having the opportunity to go to North with all the people they had been in the building with. So in fact, they do have an option to go either to South or to North. Whereas if you're at Conant, everyone at Conant, if they were moved, they stay South. If you were at, if you were at Eastover and you were moved away, you were still going North regardless. So if you had a kindergartner at Eastover, your redistrict's away. You decided you wanted to go to the Way early, you were still going North with everyone else. If you had a kindergarten at Eastover, you decided you want to stay, use the legacy option and not get transportation, you were still going North. And so that's why that was made. We only communicated that to the families that were impacted in those three subdivisions. We did not communicate it overall to the community.
Was just a question. So originally, the group that was at Way, that originally it was you could stay at Way without busing, but was it indicated to those families originally? Not the second sort of exception? Was that even if you stay at Way, you would, you would have to go to South? The original plan of the, when you had the legacy, was that the original plan? Even if you're at Way, you'd have to go to South? So that's why a lot of families decided to go to Conant?
Well, from Way to Conant, there are 27 students that got redistrict. 19 students stayed at Way, eight students moved to Conant. And that's based on the data from 12/19/22. And at that time, we didn't have, there was not a middle school legacy option that was available. If there are those students that went to Conant, if they went early because they felt, you know what, we don't know whether there will or won't be, we'll just go and then we'll go South. Because they were originally at Way and they were part of the legacy, if they would prefer to go North because they're part of that three subdivision group, we would honor that.
Got it.
Any questions on the board?
Yeah, I think the question is that there's a, potentially a group of students who are at Way.
That want, that are at Way that want to because they're, they're cohorts or whatever.
Right, their classmates.
Are now going to Conant via South, would like to go to South. So I guess the question is, is it possible, from a numbers point of view, without busing for those students that are zoned for North to go to South?
So I want to make sure I'm getting the question correct. You're asking, is it possible for all students who currently attend Way, they have the option to go to North or South?
Correct.
It would depend on how many, it would depend on class size, it would depend on staffing. And then, you know, we'd also want to hear from the board, is that same option available for students who don't attend Way? So can our Eastover students have the same option to go North or South? Can our Lone Pine students have the same option to go North or South? Because when I think of cohort, and we talk about cohort internally, we're talking about each elementary building. How do we keep and travel the elementary building students together? So if they're, you know, at one point, Way and Conant fed into Bloomfield Hills Middle School.
Right, but we're talking about students at Way.
Who have not been redistricted.
Who have not been redistricted, but they would like to go South. Their friends got redistricted to Conant and who are going to South, okay? And so these people, these children who have their friends that are going to go to South and they're at Way, want to go to South. I don't know if it's feasible, that's the question that I have, is what's the, what do the numbers look like? This is a unique situation. We're not talking about Eastover kids going to South because they're all in the catchment area. They've always been in the catchment area. We're not talking about Lone Pine students. They're in this, you know, they all, all the kids will eventually make it to South Hills. All the Conant kids will eventually make it to South Hills. But all the current Way students, some of them will go to North and some of them will go to South. And the question is for those students, not in the future, the students that exist right now.
For all the current Way students, can they all have the choice?
No, not, can they all have the, I mean, I guess potentially, but.
Because they all could have friends that go to South.
Right, so is there, could there be a process where, I mean? Could there be a process where, where we identify whether or not it's possible? That's all I'm.
So the process we had in place was we had inter-district transfer options, right? That was something we had in place that we shut during COVID as we looked to right-size. We could take a look at potentially offering that earlier than we had proposed, which was not until next year. And that would require a parent to fill out a form and say, hey, I've got a third grader. I'll be at Lone Pine, but we really, really want to go to Eastover next year instead. And then it would depend on whether or not there would be room available. And then if there's room available, then the opportunity would be granted. That's what we did traditionally as a district, and it always depended on whether or not there was room. Doing it this late in the year, we probably wouldn't have an answer if we did that until late August. Families come in all summer long. And typically, when families move, you don't know they move until a request comes in for their CA-60. Then you see that they moved and want to be very cognizant of balancing elementary-sized classrooms as well.
I guess what the question is about middle school. And I guess the question is, there's two questions. One, whether or not you could hold the student. But I know obviously, the goal is to balance the building. So if you're just saying, can we hold the student?
What do you mean, hold?
Like, yeah, I mean, you're saying if there's room. You know, the goal was to balance the middle schools to be even. But is the question just that, whether there's room in that building? When, when, is the question is, can South hold X amount of students? X amount of more students? Or how many students can South hold and how many students are enrolled now?
750, I believe, is what each school can hold. And then it comes not so much to capacity, it comes down to staffing, right? You don't, what we have now, where you might have one building, and I'll give you an example, where you could have 32 kids in an eighth-grade algebra class in one building, and this is a lived experience, and 16 in the other building. The parents were happy with the 16, obviously not happy with the 32. But the inter-district transfer would allow for that as well. It would allow, if there is room within a grade level, for that transfer to take place. You wouldn't do a one-to-one swap because you would want to know what the class sizes are. If sixth grade is larger in one building compared to the other by seven students, you wouldn't just want to do a one-to-one swap because you want to lower the class size in the other cohort in the other building. And it also comes down to scheduling, especially with electives. So a one-to-one swap typically doesn't work. That's a lived experience as well.
So is the question is, are you willing to look at the options for inter-district transfers at this point?
Yeah, I can take that, I can take that back to the team and see what might be feasible for this year. I believe you're asking K through 8, correct?
Six through 8, right?
No.
That's the problem.
Before it was available for elementary and middle, we've had requests for inter-district transfers for North and South and for all the elementary buildings. So all those requests have come in during the catchment period.
So you're saying you're not going to limit it to just the, getting to John's point, the people that were impacted from neighborhoods that were moved, you're saying the only way you would do it would open it up to K through 8 throughout the district as opposed to that limited scope? The three subs, yeah.
The three subs already have that option. So the families that moved from Way to Conant and Wayne to Lone Pine, that move took them from North Hills to South Hills for the catchment area. So everyone's been impacted. And the impact has been felt differently by different people based on their priorities. So everyone, every, every group of students that goes to school is going with a new group next year. Yes, all these over for staying together. But no longer are you placing your child in a kindergarten classroom. In K through 8, it's the same group of students with a little change. Now they're having the students from Wakefield. So every group has changed. And if there's room, there's room, right? So if we're trying to give everyone the opportunity to move if they'd like to move, then it would be better to look at it from a K through 8 point to see where there may or may not be room. Maybe there's a first grade student that wants to move.
I mean, that would be equitable, wouldn't it, to allow that?
To provide everyone to have the same opportunity.
No, I think equity is looking at the impacted students. Equality is looking at all students. So what we're saying, what I'm saying is, there are however many students at, who are scheduled to go to North Hills either next year or into the future, okay? Whose friends, I'm told, are going to Conant and then scheduled to go to South Hills.
Right.
I don't know how, like, and all I'm asking is, can we inquire how many, how many people? Like, do we have to do the transfer option or can we just put out an inquiry? We find out if it's 10 families, then can't we just like handle that, you know? As, as we've handled it for the students who got, who were going to go to South but are now being allowed to go to North?
So are you referring to surveying the current fifth-grade class of parents who are at Way and saying, you've got a fifth grader at Way. You're supposed to go North, however, would you like to go South? Or are you thinking surveying a fourth, third, or all Way parents and ask them in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, hey, by the time you get to middle school, do you want to go South? Yes, we can survey and get that information, I just need to know the grade band you're thinking of? Whether it's K through 5 or just fifth grade because they would be in middle school next year?
I mean, I'm not, I don't know, to be honest, so.
What would cause the least disruption to the district? That's the other side of it, right? If you throw the floodgates wide open, you're causing, could potentially cause chaos. So.
If you allow everyone to pick the middle school, it will be chaos. Again, lived experience, schools become unbalanced and things like that. The other option is looking at doing the inter-district transfer. Those are only granted if there's space available. And again, if you're going to an area that's not your catchment area, then you need to provide your own transportation. But this would allow, if you've got a third-grade class of 22 in one building and 17 in the other building, and someone from that 22 wants to go down to be with a group that has the 17, well, that's great. Now we're at 2118, that's a good switch. We wouldn't say for that person, you've got, your cohort is, or your class size is 17 average in third grade at Conant, and you want to go to Eastover and their average class size is 23. Well, we're not going to, we're not going to move that person. That doesn't make sense because you're just increasing that class size. That's probably the easiest, but happy to send out a survey, whatever grade band. Maybe it's just fifth grade because as a former elementary parent, it's kind of hard to think that far down the road, what you may want or not want. But we could survey all the Way fifth-grade parents and say, hey, if you had the opportunity to go to South Hills Middle School, would you go? Yes or no? Get that data and provide that data back to the board for further discussion. We could easily do that. And I'm guessing that would just be for Way? We wouldn't offer the opportunity for Conant or any of the other elementary buildings to Way in if they wanted to go someplace else either, correct?
Sure, I mean, I'm really just voicing, you know, what I heard at the tail end of a meeting that I went to. And I think that voice needs to be heard. And so I don't, I mean, do I have an opinion? Yes, but is my opinion the only opinion? Obviously not, you know? So I'm really just articulating what was told to me. And I think it's a valid point, but I'm not the voice, you know?
We're not, this, we're not having, sorry, we're not having public comment.
We, and I know I've gotten some of the emails. I promise, we've looked at it. And if there's more, please send it, but we can't, we can't have a two-way dialogue. We can't have a two-way dialogue right now, I'm sorry. If you have public comment, that's the place to do it. Catch me after, catch any of us after, but not in the meeting, please. Thank you. Sir, please. Guys, guys, we, listen, we got to have decorum, please. I'm asking, I'm asking for you to just stop, please.
It's not a back and forth, we just can't do it that way.
We can't, I'd love to do it, but it's not how we can do it.
So.
Thanks, guys.
Why don't I provide some additional data? Let's do this. We'll use one data point to start. That data point will be fifth grade, fifth graders who are currently at Way. We can send out a survey and say, if you had the opportunity to go South, would you want to go South? That will at least give us another data point to kind of look at that. We can review numbers again. And then we can also, within the administration, talk about what it might look like offering the inter-district transfer earlier than we had planned to. The goal was to get everyone in their new catchment, get everyone in their new seats, kind of see where we're at, staff properly, make sure we have our electives. But we can look at that as well. But that at least will give you two additional data points. So I could do that. I can work with the communications team and kind of go from there, at least give you some additional data points.
I think that's good. Otherwise, we're, we're just guessing randomly. If we open something up, you don't know what's going to happen. And I, like, we know it's specific areas. It's not like we have to guess. We kind of have a good feeling, but we do need to know numbers because it's May 25th. We're literally about to start school very soon here with all kinds of other things happening. So we should be able to identify pretty closely and have a sense for numbers. And yes, those two data points would help.
But to be fair, trustee Fawa.
Yeah.
We've heard from multiple community members that would like to go to different buildings, right? I've talked to a parent earlier this week and her son just made friends through playing on a rec baseball team.
Right.
And no longer would like to attend Eastover. And, you know, would like to be able to go to South where the new friends on the team are as well. So I'll keep that in mind. And the only reason that it was extended for the Way to Conant and Way to Lone Pine for that group was because they, by moving them from Way to Conant and Way to Lone Pine, they no longer could go with the students that are in their building that are slated to go to North Hills.
Right.
Do they, are they, I mean, when you say extended, right, they're all aware that they have the choice?
Yes, so those families were directly communicated with. The community at large was not. No different than when you were a student, transferred from Conant to Lone Pine, we communicated directly to those parents and those parent groups that were part of it.
All right, so next steps, you're going to come back?
Yep, I'll work with the communications team. We'll survey the fifth-grade parents only at Way and kind of get some feedback with that. Then internally, we'll look at, you know, what it might look like offering the inter-district transfer, which is something the district, we've done before. It's not something we haven't done, it's been closed, like I said, since 2020 because of COVID and trying to get everyone into the seats, trying to balance class sizes, trying to balance staff, and then make sure we have everything set for our students that way.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Pat. All right, moving on from item 10C to Board Business. 11A, request to approve cooperative agreement between Bloomfield Hills Schools and the Charter Township of West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Commission.
Is anyone going to speak? Or I guess, no, I mean, I think we made the motion and we speak, right? So I move the Board of Education to approve the cooperative agreement between the Bloomfield Hills Schools, Charter Township of West Bloomfield Parks and Recreation Commission as presented. Second.
Second, from John, any discussion?
Well, I think Pat was going to speak.
Appreciate the board working with WB Parks on this. This is a great op- This is a great opportunity to really enhance a park for all of our community members. Some additional changes based on the study sessions were done. I want to bring the board's attention to those. One, under the purpose of agreement, the commission and school district agreed to meet not less than annually. And the commission agrees to update the school district as such regarding prior year's improvements and the commission's plans for future capital improvements to the property. So that will be yearly thing that was added in. We talked about before the amenities that would be added. As you know, they do a great job with the parks program. It's also cost avoidance for us, roughly to $60,000, $70,000 per year cost avoidance we then can put back into our students, not to mention a phenomenal facility. The other change that was added came under 12, the commission's general liability insurance. It was added from time to time. And it is a reasonable request that the policy as far as general liability insurance will be reviewed to make sure five, 10, 15, 20, 30 years down the road, the $5 million insurance is great now. 30 years from now, it may not. It gives us opportunity to go back and revisit this. As a reminder to our community, we are not selling the property. It is a cooperative agreement. As a district, we own the property. There are mechanisms, if we were ever to need it to build an elementary school or something, that we could get it back. We are simply turning over the operation of the facility of Pine Lake to make it more of a park and adding the trails and pickleball courts and redoing the baseball diamond and fixing up the playground and adding porta-johns. And then WB Parks will go from there. So to the district, to us, there is, again, zero cost. There's simply cost avoidance of $60,000, $70,000 per year that then goes back to educate students. So, thank you. This has been, I believe, Trusty Colon, three years' worth of work, two years' worth of work?
Yeah, it's two, three years' worth of work, which, the question irrelevant to this, and I know it's different because West Bloomfield has a rec department.
Correct.
I guess my question is, on the same light, is what is the next step on the Fox Hills? Like, what, what are we doing there outside of tearing down the building and leaving it as green space? Has there any been talks to, obviously not the township, because I don't think they're interested, but in any develop, you know, any outside place?
Yes, I've met with an outside person before. I, I did not bring it forward to, to the board for discussion. One thing that was crystal clear from the Fox Hills community was don't bring a lot of traffic and additional people coming through the neighborhood. So the proposal that was brought to me was to put one of those huge bubble domes up. And the other proposal that was brought to me was by someone I've known for a long time. I said, hey, we're gonna turf all those fields. We're gonna make it all turf for soccer. It sounds great, but then because they would give us the funds for the turf, they wanted to use it Monday through Friday from 5:00 to 10:00, and then 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM Saturday and Sunday. To me, to bring that forward would not have been a good idea. The community would have zero use of the fields that would be put there, and it would bring nothing but traffic into the neighborhood. What I think would be, I don't know if you asked for my opinion or not, what I think would be best to put there from a recreation facility idea, and we would need to secure the funding, is to put a cloverleaf diamond there. So you'd have four fields. In the middle, you put gang bathrooms, concessions, and you'd have the ability to announce games. And that would be a great amenity to add to the community. It would support our BBL program, and it would be equivalent to what some of the top communities in the state have. And if you'd like to see pictures of those communities, happy to show you to. That would be my recommendation. We look for ways and seek ways to fund that.
Is that, like, is that next discussion to talk with the BBL, you know, talk with the BBL to see, is a cooperative agreement that they could help arrange to do that?
Potentially. We have a great relationship with the BBL.
Yeah.
They've got phenomenal leaders. To say they're passionate about recreation and baseball, it would be an understatement. There definitely is a need for additional baseball fields. I know they hope to grow the program. And this would provide the opportunity to, even for like house leagues, to be able to host a tournament on that type of site would be great. And BBL serves the majority of our kids when it comes to baseball in the community. And it really could be a great baseball-type park there.
So that would probably be the next step, to talk with them, to see what solutions they could help bring?
Potentially. There's some other third-party vendors. I don't know if they do it any longer, but Dick's Sporting Goods used to get involved. Then we get into some naming rights and things like that. There could be some potential there. But nothing else has come of that as of yet. But hopeful the board will approve this cooperative agreement so we can turn it over. And they are, I know they're anxious to get going and improve the facility. To me, it's a win-win.
Yep, okay.
I was pleased to see some of the suggested additions in here, so it was really great to see that. And right now, I, I don't have any questions other than I think it's a great thing for our district to have almost $70,000 less.
For a year.
Yeah, to take care of that property.
Thank you.
So I don't have any questions?
No, we're good. Are we ready to vote? All right.
And the motion's been made, and second, you just.
All right. Sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six-zero. Vice President Clark, can I just say one more thing? I want, I want to thank all of you. This has been a really, really, something that's been meaningful to me. I know for our community on the west side, this is something they've asked for, and we're really anxious to see happen. I know there's been prior conversations, talking to Trusty Colon that go back over a decade. And so to see the board support this, it really means a lot. And it means a lot to that part of the community, so thank you for your support.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right, next item, 11B, request to authorize purchase agreement at 3115 Franklin Road and appoint, designate. Anybody wanna pass a move?
I move, well, I move the Board of Education to proceed with legal preparation of purchase agreement for 3115 Franklin Road with conditions and contingencies providing the district the right to back out at any time. Additionally, to authorize Superintendent to designate Alan Gerros and nature center community members to engage in communication with seller and seller's agent.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Discussion?
This is merely the preparation, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Does not bind us to purchase with district funds at all.
Got it. When do we expect that it will be prepared, or does that depend on how long?
Alan's here.
Good evening. Yeah, so I suppose merely the preparation. I guess I don't know the timeline. We get back with Clark Hill and Richard Sunquist and ask. So I suppose the board wants to see it before it goes in front of the seller? I'm hearing, understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
That would be, that would be my preference.
And it would need to be brought back to a board meeting, study session?
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to hear from other board members if you don't think it's practical. Clearly, obviously, we need to sign off on it. But what did you have in mind in terms of the cadence of next steps?
My recommendation is having Alan reach back out, secure the document, send it to the board for any feedback that might be needed or provided or what say you, and then move on from there. But do not have to wait for another study session. We're pretty, we're pretty booked. Or a board meeting, we're, we're pretty booked. Or in a board update, it'd be a standalone document that will come out once finished for people to review. And then it'd be one-way communication back to myself and Alan with any comments.
It could be, we don't have to wait. It could be communicated, you know, and it could be one-way, right?
That's fine.
So we could send it around.
Thank you. Yep, as soon as it's done, we can send it.
All right.
Ready to go to vote?
Ready to go to vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. Item 11C, request to award C2307 BP 6.2 Building Site Work, All Elementary Schools. Paul Wills, BHS Owners rep from Plant Moran. And you're gonna pass the motion, read the motion?
I move the Board of Education to award Elementary School Building Site Work to Michigan Recreational Construction in the amount of $674,810 plus a 10% contingency of $67,481 for a grand total of $742,291.
We have a second?
Second.
Any comment, feedback?
Paul, just say it.
No, I don't, I don't, I know I have a lot of comments usually, but not, not now.
We ready to move to a vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six-zero. Moving on to item 11D, request to award C2308 BP, I guess stands for Bidback 7, Early Childhood Renovations at the New Eastover. I presume that's the old Easthouse.
I move the Board of Education to approve renovation work for the future early childhood center located at 1101 Westview Road for a total of $3,267,621.50. This $486,300, $486,367.50 under the original bond budget for this project. Second?
Did you second? Were you asking first?
I second.
Any discussion?
I guess the question is, what, what caused it to be $486,000 under budget?
Good evening, board members. Yes, so during the bond process, again, this is a Series 2 project that started design development actually November. And so when we were going through it, one of the biggest items is actually the mechanical systems. So Jake McDermott and the mechanical contractors went through. The actual HVAC units are actually in decent shape to last probably for the next five to 10 years. We're also reutilizing the boilers from Fox Hills, which were put in relatively newer. That's the majority of that. And then also, we're doing the partial roof and partial parking lots that are most critical. With those others kind of being looked at as one of those alternatives of looking at, coming back towards the bond once we're in that aspect of it. So that's for the most part why we're under that budget now that's currently being set in place.
So we're, so we're using things that, so we're not replacing things? We're not replacing things, no? Because, you know, Jacob and the engineers, you know, decided that what we have there is okay?
Yeah, the useful life of most mechanical systems is about 25 years, and you're about the 15 to 17-year cycle right now. So again, there is some useful life to that versus just replacing it today. Again, that's one of those items that we've kind of put on that potential infrastructure to look at as we come back through Series 2 and the Series 3. And then again, the boilers, I'm not sure of the exact age, but I know they're put in probably the last five years from sinking fund. So again, those still have another 20 years useful life for those boilers. So those are the two major components of the mechanical life was under from that perspective.
So everything in here, you're saying we won't have to fund for at least a minimum 10 years?
I can't guarantee that something's gonna last you 10 years, but right now, the useful life does show that it's just lasting another 10 to 15 years on the mechanical side.
Okay, all right.
Again, we, we spent a lot of time on the blue sheets, again, looking at paving, the roofing, the security vestibule, which is key. Looking at the classrooms, so the hallways and the corridors and the lights and the flooring will be done. There's new fire suppression. So again, taking a really hard look at that to make sure it was a critical need from an infrastructure standpoint.
Yeah, because I guess my question is, is that, right, in the bond, we've said all of these things would be new. And I guess an analysis done, $500,000 doesn't need to be new. And we wouldn't want, and I'm, I'm assuming your analysis says we wouldn't want in like three, four years, we're gonna have to replace these boilers because we didn't get them new.
Correct.
Right?
The other large component of that was the infrastructure, new electrical feed from the street. Again, there's tested through the voltage, there's no voltage drops that would necessitate a brand-new feeder. So again, that's some of that due diligence that the team goes through, through the design process. So again, we kind of went line on by line in the bond, making sure that would address the critical needs, educational needs, infrastructure, and then obviously community pieces for that, so.
Okay.
But yeah, those are the major components that, again, resulting in being under budget by about $400,000.
Okay, all right, as long as three years from now, it's, we need to replace boilers in the new state-of-the-art, you know, in our new childhood center because we didn't get them new. And you're saying that's not gonna be the case?
That's correct.
Okay.
So Paul, my question would be, so is an estimated 10-year life the threshold? So if we think it's got another 10 years, then we would consider reusing it elsewhere? Is that a barrel?
Correct. Most boilers will last to 25 to 30 years. Again, routine maintenance is key, yearly check-ins, filters, replacements, same of that nature. You should be able to get 25 to 30 years out of boilers and unit ventilators. And so that was the decision from a professional team collectively, presented through the administration team and ultimately to the board of, don't replace a unit ventilator that's only eight or nine years old, wait that 10 to 15 years. Same thing with the boilers. You just put new boilers at Fox Hills in the last five years. They're lasting another 20 years, so let's reutilize those and go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Ready to vote on this?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six-zero. Thank you, Paul. Next item, 11E, request to award EPDM Roofing and Metal Panels for Conant Elementary New Media Center.
I move the Board of Education award, the Board of Education to award Conant's Roofing to KJP Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated in the amount of $88,000, funded by the 202 Bond Fund. And according to Change Order Request Number 31, award Silverline Contracting LLC for the metal panels, $93,682.82 funded by Conant's construction contingency. Second?
Any second? Discussion?
This, this is what we talked about this study session.
Yeah, we discussed this at the previous study session.
This is something that you're saying in the previous, in the plans, in the previous plans, whatever they were, 1950, whatever, it couldn't have been detected? This was not amiss?
No, so if you take a look, if you're familiar with Conant, this is the Mansart Roof piece. So it used to be a gymnasium, it's been converted to media center. And they started to take around the, the drywall and the interiors and started to take a look at the exteriors. There's actually mechanical structure, electrical pieces that are actually not shown on the 1950s drawings. They were probably updated in the 70s or 80s, whenever that was renovated. So this would be a true hidden condition. There's $88,000 in the bond program to cover a portion of that. And then obviously, the rest would become through our, the already approved contingency for the program.
I'm, I'm saying in your expert, in your opinion, right, being our owners rep, that this was something that was, that, that was not amiss in the original bond?
Yeah, so when the original bond was, work session was put together, there's no destructive or intrusive, I'll call it field testing, if you will. It was done on visual, well, again, working with facilities, et cetera. So this would be a true hidden condition from that perspective.
And just for context, at the beginning of this project, in order to get up-to-date MEPs, in order to undertake that, it would have been obstructive. Well, how obstructive would it have been and what would the cost have been? Would that be standard practice with the age of our buildings? Can you shed some color on that?
Yeah, so to give you an idea, obviously, the age of your buildings are all pre-1980s, so you have a lot of asbestos and lead. So you'd have to first do the environmental abatement of those materials before you could actually get into the walls. That's why we found this, you know, shortly after we started tearing into the walls after the abatement. To give an idea about, $800,000 has been spent to date just on environmental abatement for the schools that are in construction. So I think to answer your question, Trusty Hill, he probably spent upwards of millions of dollars doing abatement environmental to tear down walls and ceilings to really try to figure out what's behind those walls. So again, that's just perspective of you could spend it before the bond passes to really get the right design. But I think when you take a look at the $18.8 million for Conant, you know, this is obviously a change that was, you know, not necessarily anticipated for that for the Mansart Roof.
The amount of work that it would have taken to get us up to speed to find out what we're working with would have been significantly better than the, this type of event that comes up in the absence of an MEP drawing that's up to date. Okay.
Any other comment?
My only other comment is, this is paid for by the 2020 Bond Fund. Our agenda got cut off and reads 202 Bond Fund just on our paperwork.
Yeah, it does too.
Oh, but other than that, I don't have any questions or comments.
Our formatting's off tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Motion passes six-zero. Moving on to item 11F, request to approve classroom technology for North and South Middle Schools. Dave Shulkin?
I move the Board of Education to approve the purchase of classroom technology for North and South Hills Middle Schools for a total of $218,801.50. Award is to be paid from the bond funds. Second?
Second. Any discussion?
Not for me.
So Dave, what's the content here? Are we talking about classroom technology?
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, so this will be, this will include document camera.
Yeah, good evening, yeah, so this will be, this will include document cameras, monitors for our staff as well as students, and then a laptop that'll be for, say, for the design tech labs at the middle schools. So that's what those include.
Is, is this the total that was in the original, what the community voted on, two hundred and eighteen thousand, or was it more, cut back?
Neither, it was not captured because these are new, new spaces. So some of that pieces would have been captured that we had, so for example, the specialty devices, which would be, say, those laptops for the students and those design labs, we had numbers for, but say, for example, monitors, we wouldn't put that in the bond program, we would know that those are, so for example, when you see, see a line item in the bond program, again, I want to remind everybody, that blue book that we did was tech and facility assessments back in twenty fifteen and twenty eighteen. That demonstrated our needs at that time. And then when we came to the board, part of the, part of the scope and design committee with the community was to say, hey, you're asking for X amount of dollars, show us that need. Those are what that showed at that time. So in twenty eighteen, these were the needs we had. Keep in mind, we had not even, you can't even, you can't design something until you start spending money for it. So we don't have designs of ingenuity labs, what does a design tech lab look like from twenty eighteen to today? And so when you go through those processes, you're gonna have to have, you're gonna have changes to that. And so when we look at, when you look at what we promised the community, the community was, we are going to have devices, systems in place to support the curriculum and those spaces as designed. And in this case, in this particular case, we are meeting those, those needs, and that is my recommendation.
So this is a, so again, to put it in layman's terms, this is a two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar change order?
No.
To meet the needs?
This is, no.
So what was in the original bond of this two hundred and eighteen thousand, and what are we saying?
This was, yeah, I don't have that in front of me. Yeah, I don't have that in front of me.
So, why don't, what, what is, so, so what this is, is, it looks like a hundred and forty hover cams?
Those are document cameras, so for our, for our teachers.
Okay, so what do those do?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So like when you're in a, when you're in a classroom, and so, let's say we're doing math, which is a great, a great example for hover, document cams, that's a particular brand that they're talking about. And so I may think about when many of us, at least me, when I went to school, many of you younger, we made that like overhead projector, same kind of similarity, so where we may have, hey, I'm gonna show you this problem, you also might have, John, I want you to come up here and I want you to show the rest of class what you're doing. And so that provides a way to kind of extend, but it's also digital, so I can put it on other boards, I can engage some other software with it, I actually can telestrate differently, so it's a little bit more dynamic than, say, an overhead projector.
The second item is some monitors and soundboards, what, what are those exactly?
Yeah, so when you think about our staff and students, so when they're gonna have a workstation or a laptop or whatever it might be, they need monitors and soundbars so they can hear the content that might be on their computer. And so when we're looking at those, those in general are for our staff, and so when they're in their classroom, they need an additional monitor because they have a laptop currently. And so this would provide them a monitor, help them manage their space and their workflow normally. And we currently do that, that's not something new or different than we currently do.
And again, getting back, I'm sorry, Johnny.
Oh, I was just gonna go through, so, and then the others are the workstations and the laptops, and those are like coding quality, computers?
Absolutely.
What is it, those are bulky, I like them, but are they, is it for like AutoCAD? Or what kind of, what are they doing?
Yeah, so think about, the design tech lab is kind of pushing those specs way high, and so when you think about, you've got AutoCAD, you've got stuff that's not only in the cloud but also on the client's side, where you've got to kind of have that beefed-up RAM, that beefed-up graphics. And so when we think about the curriculum and then also the future, so you're buying this now, so you also can, as that kind of grows and expands, you're going to, you're gonna need to kind of have that horsepower, and you won't have to replace it in two years, it'll last a little bit longer.
So Dave, back to, I think, Paul's original question?
Yeah.
I presume we had some quantity of hardware projected from twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
How does that compare with the quantities shown here?
Sure. Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, Siva, I'd have to get that for you.
I guess, Paula, I mean, I guess that's, that's the question, right, is, are we using stuff in the bond fund that we did not, that the community didn't vote on? I guess that's the question.
No, the, the answer is no, no, so when, so when we have those numbers, and I, and I want you to, I want you to think about something. The technology side, those numbers were at that time, but more importantly, we have a bucket, we have technology. And in that bucket, you have those spaces, safety, security, classroom technology, stat right, and non-instructional technologies, those are the buckets. The, the line item you're looking for, I'd have to go look to see if that matches up or not. We have a bucket that we're keeping with that budget, this is not any forecast above or beyond what we currently had planned for devices in those spaces. But to answer your exact question, I don't know the answer without having to go back to the book and looking at what we had exactly in the number.
Yeah, I, I think we can match up, I mean.
In, in the bond document, the one, the two-hundred-page one, I think it is, there is a space for like classroom technology, and then there's a space for student and teacher technology, this might cover both, but I think that it's possible for us to match this up.
As long as, and again, it's, it's, I'm sorry that he left, Paul, you know, our owner's rep, as long as we're not just throwing things now and calling it the two thousand twenty bond to pay for things that we originally did not allocate, because that would be a change order.
Right, I mean.
So I'm asking, I'm just asking a fiscally responsible question.
Yeah.
And.
And the scope, so the scope of what we're asking for is no different than what we had in the bond program.
Okay.
But the number, I couldn't tell you, I'd have to look at that number.
I'm pretty familiar with that document, and I, and I would say, the only thing I would say is that an item like, whatever it is, the document scanner, might not be specifically laid out only because maybe four years ago we didn't use those, you know what I mean? So.
And we wouldn't even know now, like, I get what you're saying, it is nice to go back and say, did we at least, at bare minimum, say we're gonna have, you know, coding labs with workstations for the students, workstation, and then the hollow, you know, hover cam or whatever, I think that's gonna be spelled out, we're not gonna know we were gonna have seventies, six seventies, maybe, we wouldn't even know then because that model may not have existed, but to your point, yeah, we should go back and see what the original intent was.
Between, I'm sorry to say, you know, between David, our owner's rep, and Barton Mallett, saying, we allocated two million to go for these things, these things are outdated, so we're taking that money and we're spending it here because this is now a state-of-the-art for that.
But it's not outdated.
That is not what I'm doing, not with the recommendation.
This is new, this is new stuff, right?
That is correct.
Like, this is a coding lab, we're not replacing laptops?
That is correct.
Or workstations out. In the bond, I'm assuming we're going to have a spot in there that says some kind of STEM initiative for students to do AutoCAD or, you know, design, whatever it is, all these programs, maybe it's the three D modeling, whatever it is, we probably have something in there, we probably have a dollar amount, what that dollar amount is, David can find out, and we'll see. But even if we do have something, who knows?
The prices, I mean, the prices aren't real from then.
There's no way that that's realistic.
Twenty eighteen, our Chromebooks went up by, I think, thirty-five percent, right? So just, the, so I'm, just to answer the question, this is new stuff, this is in the scope of the bond, this is what was, you know, is basically outlined in there, where no one's losing anything, it's actually completing what we promised, both in the design, our curriculum, and what we did in the bond.
As long as you, our owner's rep, can validate that this is within the scope of the bond, it's not now, after the fact, people coming saying, I, I, you know, a wish list, I wish we had this, all right, we'll just put it as part of the two thousand twenty bond. As long as that's not what's going on, I'm fine.
And then also one nuance to understand, so sometimes in those numbers, and I know you look at those numbers, you might say, hey, Dave, you got a number, let's just say it's four hundred bucks, you're like, well, Dave, I can get Best Buy, I can get this for three twenty-five. Also note that in some of those, because we're, the granularity of this, when you apply for the bond and you do this process, I'm not putting, you might see the licensing, you might see the case for a device, that we build right into that price. So you might not get the granularity, hey, Dave, you're gonna order sixty cases for sixty dollars, oh, now I start doing the math, I get how this works out. Again, you know, we knew that we needed to have those numbers that would include licensing cases and the support materials, because I'm not gonna put on there, hey, we're gonna order five hundred keyboards and mice, they're part of that system, if that makes sense.
Just for another example, there is a line item, say for Conant's, is document camera, okay, the thirty, right? And so at the time, we presumed they would cost four hundred and fifty dollars, I'm not sure what they said.
And we're getting them, we're getting them cheaper.
Right, and so we, this has a hundred and forty, which covers K through eight classrooms, so presumably six schools.
It goes back.
I'm just saying, it does match up, you know, I looked at it.
It goes back to the fundamental detail, right? It's either in the bond?
Right.
Or it's a change order, right? So I just would need to know, we're saying it's in the bond, and that's fine.
In the bond, yeah.
I mean, it's not specifically called a hover cam, but it's there, I think.
Yeah, because that's a particular brand, and we would never do that, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Any other discussion?
No.
Ready to vote on this?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six-zero. And then the next item, eleven G, request to approve the IA PTIA Gym AV System Purchase.
This is, this is, okay, I'll move it, I move the Board of Education approve the purchase of AV technologies totaling thirty-five thousand from the Oakland Campus Gym, the total includes, includes awards to the Third Coast Tech LLC for the procurement, installation, and installation of the AV system, awards to be paid using the IA PTIA funds.
Second?
Right, and the discussion, well, the discussion was, and I think we had, we discussed this at the study session, is why are we approving money coming out of the PTIA funds?
Because we have to.
Because we, yeah, we have, I just didn't, you know, I don't.
What's, what's the, do you remember, we talked about it at the study session, there's a reason.
It has to do with the fact that it would be an asset on our property that we have to ensure, we have to like maintain, that kind of thing.
If it's an asset on our property, we have to approve.
So we're taking a fixed asset and it has a value, and that value exceeds the state bid threshold.
Right.
So therefore, we're complying with the state bid threshold by having the board formally approve this. In addition, the board would typically approve donations coming in to ensure equity between buildings and programs.
Ken, that's a good point, there's a, there's a donation as part of this as well, from our vendor.
That's fine.
I saw the existing set up last night, that was rough.
I couldn't, I couldn't.
PTIA.
Thank you for the donation.
That's fine. So, I'm good.
All right, any other discussion?
No.
Ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes six-zero, thank you. All right, next item, item eleven H, request to support or disapprove Oakland Schools' proposed FY twenty-four general budget. So I am the board designate from Bloomfield Hills to the Oakland School District. So the general fund has a budget of twenty-four point five million dollars, I believe, twenty-four point five four zero million, and we're being asked to approve the budget. Last year's budget was twenty-seven point two four five million. There's a hundred and seventeen-page document, which is included in your package, and so we're looking at pages thirty-nine and thirty-seven and thirty-eight of that hundred and seventeen-page document. Or summarized version, it's probably page thirty-six, there's four line items in the middle of the page that says expenditures. So expenditures include general administration of two million and fifty-one thousand, finance and operations of nine point four two million, instructional services of eleven point one million, which increased from last year, and then plant and fixed charges, which decreased significantly from last year. So last year's total was twenty-seven point two million, and this year's total is twenty-four point five four million. The reason the plant and fixed charges came down by six million, after the Oxford incident, there was funding put in for putting security devices in a number of the, or all of the school districts, and so that number last year was inflated. Since that project has already been funded, the construction or implementation will go on through this year, but that's been already funded. So there's no more request on the plant and fixed charges, so that's why that number came down. In instructional services, the number went down from, or went up from eight point seven million to eleven point one million, an increase of about one point eight. And a lot of that was for the wellness fund that, Paul, you had asked questions about.
Yes.
The details, according to Oakland Schools, was that this is basically funds they're asking for approval so they can hire additional consultants for mental well-being and support to all twenty-eight school districts, and we'll get a piece of that, the way was explained to me, we would have to apply, and they would give us a portion of that, of those resources, of that one point eight million based on our needs. Is that a fair statement?
So they're asking us, right, not just us, but all of Oakland County?
All twenty-eight districts.
To approve for another two million, and for all the districts to apply to get money back?
It's not something they're gonna keep.
So, yeah, so why would, why, why ask for more money than for us to apply for the money, it just doesn't make sense.
They have to, the way it was explained to me, they have to get us to approve the budget for them to hire the resources, or get money before they can go hire resources, to send it back to us. They can't do it after the fact, they have to have the resources available to send to us on hand. So, little bit of the chicken and the egg, I get it.
Or just give us all the money, and we don't have to approve a budget to go to them, then ask for them for the, it just doesn't make sense.
The reason they are doing it centrally, again, according to Pam in the Department, Finance Department, was that they don't see a need for these intervention counselors on a full-time basis through the course of a year for all twenty-eight school districts. They see them as being required on a part-time basis, and they don't see that individual district need to necessarily go hire these people.
How do they come up with that?
I mean.
When Pat has said, like, we have a defined need to hire more mental health resources, I don't, I don't get that.
It's.
I can explain the mental health need, I can't explain someone else's budget.
Yeah, I get that.
All right, so, yeah, please try to explain, why would there be a need centrally as opposed to us having those resources here in our own district?
Well, we've applied for mental health grants, and we receive grants, you know, whether it's for the therapy dogs or to add, you know, we've added additional social workers, so there's been a need. Again, it would be inappropriate for me to speak to someone else's budget, I'm not in those meetings, I haven't studied the book back and forth, so.
I guess not so much a question on the budget, but if you're looking for resources, do you believe that we're better off putting those resources in our district ourselves? Or are you better off pulling them in from Oakland Schools as required, I guess, because that's what they're telling us?
I don't know if it's an option for us to receive the funds directly or not, what I can say is anytime there are funds available or grants, you know, Karen and her team have applied for everything that's possible out there, and we've shared that with the board, all the grants we've received left and right, there's, there's nothing that goes for that's unapplied. Again, I can't speak to whether that can just be allocated directly or not, but if there's opportunity, whether it's Oakland Schools or through the federal government to apply for anything that benefits students, you know, we'll go ahead and we'll apply and try to secure those funds regardless.
My fundamental problem with this budget, right, is, you know, you asked, like, I
to apply for anything that benefits students, you know, we'll go ahead and we'll apply and try to secure those funds regardless.
My fundamental problem with this budget, right, is, you know, you asked, like, I sent questions, you said you had similar questions, you got an answer like two hours ago. I mean, two hours ago, it's a 119-page document. They really... What they should do is, they should have a representative come to a study session...
I agree.
And give us a PowerPoint.
That was the note I made, is we should have somebody in here.
I think, and I'm, you know, personally, I'm voting no on this, because I don't think they're transparent at all at what they're doing. They throw a budget, here's 120 pages, you're not going to read it, so you might as well pass it, and I don't operate that way.
So, Karen, if I may ask, is there a deadline from Oakland Schools to get approval?
June 1st.
I mean, so why aren't they here? I mean, why aren't they here at our meeting, answering our questions? This is as... Talk about transparency.
We wouldn't be able to speak to that for them.
No, I'm not saying this is rhetorical, but I'm just saying, and maybe they're listening and watching, which I doubt, but I'm just saying that, you know, so, I think this is as little transparent as possible. I can't vote on this.
Trustee Colan, when they do put the budget out and have the deadlines, it comes out in early May, usually it gives almost a full 30 days. They offer up, they have a presentation to the superintendent's group, they have a presentation to the business official group, and they invite the board-elected liaisons from each district to come to a special presentation. I think that was set up... Actually, they put this out in April, because I think the date of that was April 24th. So, unfortunately, Siva was not able to attend that, but they do have an opportunity with board trustees, can go there, ask specific questions, and sit in on the presentation. So, there is an opportunity.
I think, yes, you know, I've been remiss in reaching out to them early enough, but to Tarek's point, you know, I'm a finance person, it took me a while to go through and weigh through all the detail.
It's impossible.
And it's ridiculous that they're not putting a summarized presentation for, you know, a board member to understand what they're asking.
Not even just a board member. My feedback to Oakland Schools would be, it would be nice... If we don't want to have somebody here, fine, but there should be a summarized version, not just for us, but for the community to know, hey, here's what we're doing in terms of mental health, here's what we're doing in terms of what, you know, math, whatever it is, like, there should be a couple bullet points, what this budget represents, because for me, I looked at it when I first got it, and I'm still trying to digest it. I know you highlighted those areas, but I can't great... I keep asking questions, what does this object code mean? What does this mean? And I have to go to Google, and I could go back and forth with them, but what would be really helpful is if we had just even a two-page document for the community, for us to say, here's what we're proposing for Oakland Schools. I mean, that... It just... I don't even know how to vote on something like this, because I still have so many questions. And I feel, I'm sure they have good interest, but have they taken feedback from school districts like us, where we say, what would be better is if we had the full-time mental health resource inside of, you know, in our district, rather than pulling from?
One of the thing... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. One of the things that just reminded me, talking about that, like, the big program, which I wish they would expand upon and spend more money on, if we had opportunity to have dialogue, would be the CTE, you know, CTE program, you know, that they have, and that, I would like to see more... I would like to have, like, dialogue, not come to some, in the defense of Siva, some meeting, wherever it was...
Right.
In an hour, and ask question with 30 people. You're not going to get your real questions in. They should be coming to the board meetings and having dialogue with board members, and we have an opportunity to have more type of questions. I don't even know what Siva could have got out of that meeting for an hour and a half.
I do recall, this is my third summer on the board, I think, and we had no more visibility in prior years. If anything, we had less visibility in prior years than we did this year, when we talked about it in the USBrier, right? So, it's a general problem...
That they're not addressing.
With Oakland Schools on visibility or simplifying things, clearly. They know what they're talking about, but they're not simplifying it for us.
My recommendation would be for the board to take a vote, and then it is what it is, and then send feedback to Dr. Southward regarding improvements you'd like to see regarding the budget, or things you'd like me to share with Oakland Schools, and then I will share that with Oakland Schools.
I just wanted to make one quick comment.
It does spell out some of the mental health work that they do. It would be nice to know how often and where they gave those services to, so I know where the money is going to. I mean, it would be nice to have, you know, just some more information.
The one thing I did find out, and it took a while to find this out, is their CTE program, like, each class...
Yeah.
Regardless of your enrollment, so let's just say, we have 5,000, Wald Lake has 12,000, you only get a certain amount of seats per district, regardless of your enrollment, which I don't even think is equitable. I think that's something, you know, that I think I would even bring up that they should revisit, but that's just one thing. But, right, we do have some questions.
And again, this is to pass a vote on their general fund. The bulk of the funds we get from Oakland Schools is for special ed. That's probably like, probably of the 12 to 13 million we get from Oakland Schools, about 200 comes from the... 200K comes from the general fund. The bulk of it goes for special ed, to the tune of about 12 to 13 million.
I guess, maybe we just vote at this point.
All right, so, let's just go ahead and take a vote. Again, my feedback would be, vote yes or no today, we'll see what shakes out, but we definitely need to get them in for a study session, we'll work with Rebecca to work that into our schedule for the year. Okay. So, let's go around the room. All in favor?
No.
Any in favor?
I just still have questions. I mean, if I say no, let me ask this. By voting no, does it hold anything up? Because it's due June 1st. I mean, what are the repercussions if there's a no vote back to Oakland Schools?
I think one time in the past, we voted no, and there was no impact.
I don't... I mean, I obviously don't want to do anything detrimental.
Our goal is to take time.
We're not going to do anything detrimental to our students by doing this, correct?
That's... Okay.
Is that fair?
In the past, when we voted no one time, it didn't cause anything. I'm not sure if the flavor of the county were to all vote no, what that would do to the...
Correct. We're to that point, we're one of... But still, it's... But it sends a message that we're not just going to rubber stamp something. It may still pass, right? If the majority of districts pass it, and I don't know where everyone else stands, but this sends a message that you need to be more transparent, and I think word will get out to other districts, is, you know, we may lead this in saying, yeah, we do agree you need to be more transparent.
Should we take a roll call vote?
Yep. I can't recall why I was convinced... I mean, this is the same stuff we got last time. So, I'm like...
I asked a bunch of questions.
I'm wondering, did Howard convince me it was okay? I don't know. I'm trying to figure out why I was convinced before that to vote yes, so...
I do remember we debated last couple of years.
Yeah.
I've brought it up in the last couple of years, that I'm just... Whatever. But we can do a roll call vote, and see what happens.
All right, Tarek?
No.
No.
No. No.
I have a no.
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 All right, unanimous, 6-0. Vote no.
All right.
All right.
All right, item 11I, board intern program committee recommendation.
Your motion?
I move the Board of Education to appoint students G and L as board interns, and students